So the mayor is not here.
Council president update.
Okay, so I will give you an opportunity to open up here.
Yeah, thank you Commissioner Williams. As council president, I'll call the Lakeview Town Council to join me with the board of commissioners together.
Okay.
At eleven oh two.
Thank you. And so first up, we will have a presentation from DQ from Peter. I believe that's. So just a few broad numbers.
Yeah.
That may come today.
But it's not for action.
I mean, it's very depends on how you know as far as now on there and but I wasn't planning.
Are you ready?
Sure. I think so. Well, thank you Chair Winters, Commissioner, and President Johnson and Town Council. Thank you for giving an update on where we are with our Lakeview area PM advance plan. This is a 2018 year update. So actually, it's kind of old news. It's from 2018 and here we're almost done with 2019. But it takes a little bit long, a little bit, a little bit to pull this together. Apologize, it took about an extra month. I was hoping to get some emission inventory data folded into this, some newer revised data. Turned out that couldn't happen in our timeframe. So normally, we'd like to review this with you early, earlier in October. And after this, with your concurrence, this rolls up to EPA. We send it to them. It's to let them know what we're doing, our activities, where we are with our monitoring, where we think we are. And gives them a chance to come back to us with comments. Sometimes they're very good and helpful. Other times they're, they're okay. They may not apply too much to our particular situation here. But I'm always looking forward to seeing their comments. I'll just jump in on the highlights. I'd like to just talk a little bit about monitoring. This is probably old news for a lot of you in general, but just a general update. A little bit about monitoring, where we are this year, where we are on our monitoring in comparison with the standard. A little bit about wildfire years. We'll go over a little bit into our strategies that we're deploying now to reduce the smoke in the area. A little bit on prescribed burning. Really just talk a little bit about the changes, a few changes we have moving into the future. And conclude things that way. So last year, for 2018, four year ago, we did pretty well. I was hoping we'd do a little bit better. We had one last higher data day in there than I was hoping. About ninety-eight percentile of the data that we have for the year is what counts for final, where we're at for the year. Without wildfire smoke, we're at about twenty-eight point three micrograms. So we're, we're doing pretty well. Standard being thirty-five micrograms. That's pretty good. You can see in 2016, we had a fabulous year. Being our, our third highest data point on the year was like nineteen micrograms. That's fantastic. Not sure we'll ever see that again, but we, it does, it comes up. 2017, we had a little, little more difficulty with compliance with our ordinances. Part of it's we changed our strategies there to get better outreach to folks. But you could kind of see, we had a few trouble years here and there. We had one 2017. Hopefully now we've got a little bit better handle on situation year to year and can tackle any troubles we see raring up early. This year so far, we're, we're looking pretty good. We're below the standard. We're doing well. But we're weaning daily at Almofore who's behind, behind a little bit. And I and Mayor Paul Commission are pretty nervous about how the next two months go for air quality because this is a county year to county year measurement. You never know what the new, the new winter will bring. And we're in kind of marginal air stagnation event right now that's looking like it's going to continue on, at least through Monday or so. Fortunately, there's warmer weather, so people aren't burning as much. But we did see nice spike of smoke this morning, for example, but should clear all out. But we hope we don't have a lot of stagnation events with the new four into January. So for a three-year average, this is the, what the air quality standards compared against. There's three-year rolling average, taking that ninety-eight percentile data for each of those years roll it into a three-year average and then compare it to thirty-five micrograms. So we're, right now, for 2016 to 2018 year, we're just below. We're at thirty-four micrograms. We're just a little bit below. Last year, we're just a little bit above. Because you look in the past few years, if we roll back here, we see, well, yeah, we're averaging out this high level in 2017. So that's a chunk we still have to deal with for the rest of this year. Previously, we had this one really bad year. I'm not sure what's quite happened that year. But it was pretty high and that helped contribute to about a three-year period of high, where we're well above the standard. I suspect because last year, or 2017 was a pretty high year, that even if we do pretty well this year, we may come out just above the standard on a three-year average for next year. Or for 2019, 2017 to 2019. I suspect that'll be the case. Fortunately, we aren't going to be held to that. EPA is going to call us in and say, oh, you failed the standard. You're down on a pain. They're going to do that next year. We still have some breathing in the air. But yeah, we're below the standard and with luck, we can stay that way this year, or I guess it will be a little bit higher. But we're looking forward to then the, the next year, the 2020 and moving forward, seeing what we can do there. Let's see. Main, main backbone of our program is our wood stove curtailment program, our green, yellow, red days. As we try to give advice to people and their ordinances and say, you can't burn your non-certified wood stove on yellow days and on red days and so forth. That's the backbone of our, of our program. It's working pretty well. A lot of it's working well through our compliance efforts. We get our, we mainly be Don. We'll go out and do controls. I'll use a oil leak at that point. I may get out with her sometime this winter and join in on one of those tours. But last year, we did, we did, we had great weather, you could tell, from as far back as January through the end of the year. We only had nine yellow days and two red days. That's pretty good. Usually, we see more of five, maybe upwards of ten red days. A lot more yellow days. We've had a couple of yellow days already this year. But it's pretty good. And, and the main emphasis of compliance is that Don employs is to get out and knock on doors early. You see somebody who's really smoking away on a red, on a yellow day and just knock on their door or leave material on their handle or their, their door. Or they get a letter. If it's a red day and you said, you see a lot of smoke coming out of the smokestack, that's worthy of a letter saying, hey, you know, you're not supposed to be doing that. What are you doing, et cetera? But here, here's what the, the ordinance says. Here's what we're trying to do. We're trying to protect the health of people in Lakeview and in the county. Please refrain from this. And usually, people will comply pretty well. There's a few folks out there who are chronic. Every year, they have to be reminded, kind of called on the carpet. But our goal, our goal, and Don did this well last year, was early on, early on in the year, a little bit of problem smoke from somebody, you knock on the door or you leave them information or both. And you try to, you know, get control of the situation early in the year so it's not continuing on into those red days and into the, throughout November and December, we have a lot of poor days where maybe we go over the daily standard on a number of days before we get them to behave better. We've had a series of wood stove changeouts over the years. They're really successful. We didn't have any last year. Didn't have any funding. I'll get into funding for that here in a little bit. We've continued our, our outreach and education program pretty well. We try to make, we've thought, we've gone a couple ways on making our advisory call determination. Can we get out there with a green, yellow, red determination by eight AM, for example? First, we're thinking earlier is better, but realized people are pretty much done burning by the, the morning. So might as well make it more of a new to new kind of determination. You know where it is for that day and the next morning, as we look forward to the weather forecasting and kind of look back to where we've been with, with smoke and wood burning in our community for the past twenty-four hours, maybe even up to forty-eight hours. It's a little bit of alchemy saying, eh, where, where we think we're going to end up here in the next twenty-four hours to forty-eight hours with our own smoke. A lot of us is looking at, at the weather very closely. We try to keep refining our, how we approach the weather each, each, each year. We do outreach a whole bunch of different ways. We'll continue all those different ways from whether it's red days being announced on the fairground reader board to radio announcements around a few radio stations. We've increased to have a number of flags that we put out now in town. Our, our stoplight. We have a town webpage. It's on there and Facebook as well. And we have our phone hotline. A lot of different ways we can reach people. We think we can reach more. Some method you will evaluate that in air quality committee. I'm sure you'll report on that. Prescribed burning, I think you all remember, a month ago, we talked about the extension MOU and revising it, updating it with the Forest Service. That's been done now. So primarily, they won't burn on red days. When's a red day? That's the gist of it. They really also are very careful on what yellow days they would burn. We have that to revise for Cleveland County as well. I think I've been finding those too. So it's a, a common discussion with Forest Service. I have to look at when is the ones with the same MOU would call the climate, when that comes due. I think that's maybe this year or next year because they work the same agreements, so they don't burn on red days. That's our ones poor air quality days. They don't burn within the goose-like air basin. That's the main emphasis. Please don't put a bunch of smoke into the valley that may just sit around for a few days and slowly add to the soup that we've been building. Main thing I'd like to talk about is sort of our future efforts we have going on. Well, of course, we'll continue our wood stove curtailment program, look for any changes or tweaks there that we could do. We continue our outreach and education programs. One thing that we embarked on, we'll move this here, to try to take a look at our county and town ordinances and evaluate those for how can we change those or refresh them, update them, maybe align them a little bit better. And we put together a small work group to do that with help with Commissioner Williams.
Do you want to copy this out of town? Because we made some altercations since our last meeting.
Okay.
No, alterations, sorry. I had a meeting with the sheriff and the fire marshal and we've went over a few other things on exactly how we want to word things in the document for the violations versus the citations and just the adjustments that we want to make in both the town and county ordinance.
Yeah, maybe you could give time to talk about that a little bit. We were, we were trying to figure out how would we, if it came down to enforcing these, we really tried not to have an enforcement provision. We just wanted compliance. People, please comply with our ordinance. You don't want to go down the enforcement path. But if we had to, we have a couple of burners who don't care, for example. They think about themselves and their life and whatever they've got going on, they don't want to comply. So we talked about how to do that. The, they involve, well, whether it's police or sheriff, and then through sheriff or fire department. So maybe you could speak a little bit more to that.
Sure. Mark, if you ask this down.
Just one thing to reiterate is to remind people too, that this is only for in the urban growth boundary. That is something I'm having issues with. People outside the urban growth boundary are calling and leaving messages thinking that they're included in this and they are not included in this. It's only in the urban growth boundary.
And I think we've kind of made sure that that's worded properly in both our county and the town ordinance. This is a list of recommendations. Not actionable right now, obviously, but we want to make sure that we're bringing this to everyone so you guys have a chance to review exactly what we're talking about. I give a copy of this to each one of the commissioners so that they can look over it and see what they think. If they have any questions, feel free to, to talk about them. There's a total of nine recommendations that we've kind of put forward. Just to try and clear up some of the things in our ordinances. For instance, in the, in the town ordinance, there was an issue with only being able to stoke your fire one time every four hours. And we decided that was a little, it got, got a little bit messy. There was, I think if you'll see in the first section going down, one of our recommendations was changing the thirty micrograms per cubic meter cap to be changed to twenty-five in both the town and the county ordinances. Obviously, I'm sure there's going to be some discussion about that. Number two was we asked that fireplace be removed from the town ordinance as a, as a device for exemption because we thought it was a very general term to just exempt fireplaces right off the bat where you don't even need an exemption form or anything else when fireplaces are actually some of the dirtier forms of eating. We just had, we just asked that that be removed and that there be some consideration regarding some of the other devices in that section. The county ordinance, actually, there are exempted items, are pretty much propane, barbecue pits and pellet soaps. That's pretty much all that we had. Going down to subsection, uh, section two and subsection B, there was, of course, I already talked about the refueling clause. Then going down to section three, we also had a little thing in our ordinances where we would have law enforcement go into homes to verify sole source heat. And we decided that that would not be appropriate to leave in our ordinances. We're not sure how that ever got into our ordinances or how that's even constitutional. Might as well ask people to turn over their guns while you're in there. So we just, we just had, asked that that be removed as a recommendation for adjusting our ordinances. Further down in number two, we recommended that the expiration date in subsection A be reworded on both documents. Exemptions must be renewed every year as exemptions will expire annually on October first of the following year. Because the wording was really jumbled in there. It sounded like after October first, you couldn't even apply for an exemption. And it just didn't make any sense in the ordinance. So we just kind of reworded a few things. Then going down, section five, this is the enforcement and penalties issue. And we, we got stuck on this for quite a while. We had two different classes of violation. We had class A violation in one ordinance. We had a class B violation in the other. But we were listing it as an actual citation, which is a lawful viola, has it become a lawful citation and lawful issue where you have to have law enforcement actually enforce it, where it's actually a civil violation. Where we've gone through, we've reworded it so that it actually reflects exactly what the class B violation actually is. It's a violation. So the thing about that is you don't actually need a law enforcement deputy to issue that violation. It can be done by a fire chief. It can be done by a number of other people. And it's just a violation right there. And we just asked that that class B violation be reflected and mirrored in both ordinances, in both the town and the county.
So will that apply for garbage and stuff being burned in the fireplace as well?
It's a violation, yes.
I just wanted to make quite a.
Absolutely, yeah. Now, if, if someone's burning cat drop beans or anything else, you know, I mean, it's.
I seriously got that complaint this morning.
So, yeah, I figured that's a violation. And that brings us to step number two. We had originally talked about this and this is something, Peter, I wanted to make sure you were updated. We originally put in there to give it, you could issue two violations, uh, two, two warnings before a violation could be issued. In talking with our fire marshal, he recommended that we move that to just one. And just a minimum of one warning must be given within the season and recorded before an actual violation could be issued. And that way, there's no could be two or anything else. It's just a minimum of one. And I mean, if you want to issue another warning or whatever, work with the person, that's open. But you need to at least give one warning, then you're done, you know? And so it just kind of sets it in stone. We also, we also talked a little bit about the sheriff and how that was going to work with who was going to enforce the ordinance itself. I put in this updated document we've included that the local fire chief or his designee will be responsible for issuing the violations with up to one thousand dollar class B violation fine. And it gives an ORS number and everything else. The reason we went with that partly is because per the fire chief's direction, that is kind of in his ballpark and how he may be able to do it. So I'm wanting to work with us, Dennis, to try and figure out how we're going to make that work. And I was texting with him this morning. We were kind of talking back and forth about it, so. That also comes, and the, and the other reason for that is, it brings down to the last recommendation, the compliance for smoke abatement, air quality and the issuance of warnings within the Lakeview urban growth boundary will be the responsibility of the town of Lakeview. The reason we did that is because there are the grants available to be able to pay for the, the monitoring, the enforcement and everything else. We didn't want to get the county and the town into a competition for that grant because the town, as I understand, has already gone out for that grant. They have access to those. So for overtime issues and everything else, for someone going out there, it would give the town direct reason why they would be the reason, the, the individual that would go out for that. And they know the area already. You guys are, you know, Don's been doing a great job and, you know, going out there and monitoring this issue.
Thank you.
But this will kind of extend it past that Ninth Street barrier where you're not having one side of Ninth Street being enforced and the other side of Ninth Street, you can't do anything about. So it just kind of broadens it to the urban growth boundary. But it does not extend beyond that. Anyway, that's the total of our recommendations that everyone had. I myself have some reservations on a few of those things, so we can kind of go over those. But I wanted to make sure that everything that we discussed in our committee got to the town so you guys could review it, discuss it, and we can all kind of go over what we're going to do with our ordinances.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm not sure if we heard back from the towns, legal counsel. I left a phone message with.
Haven't, you guys haven't heard it. Our legal counsel did review it and Jim Bailey said that it looks fine.
Right.
He was more than comfortable with any of those changes.
So just, just quite, thank you for the update. We haven't advertised for an actual hearing and to amend it.
No, we're not making.
So we're not making no decision today. Today, we're looking at accepting the Lakeview area PM advancement program plan. All these things, thank you for the work on that. But the full discussion, everything will be there in the hearing process.
Yeah, this is just.
That is advertised to build and amend the ordinances and the town will do their ordinance.
Absolutely. This is just to make sure that we can articulate exactly what we were discussing, what we're hoping to do maybe. We've tried to do the light work. It took us about three and a half hours. We went through both the county and the town ordinance word for word, looked for everything that we felt that might be an issue and.
I appreciate the work there. Might just an operational procedure note that.
Yeah, not actionable.
I have a question, Commissioner, if I will.
Absolutely.
Is there going to be an appeal process for those who get cited? And I'm assuming that because it's a no-AR house, there's got to be an appeal process for anybody that, that gets cited. And I'll give you an example of what I'm talking about. A traffic violation, there's an appeal process and it's a violation. They can go to circuit court and, and take it to court. Is there a process in these ordinances that people will have the opportunity to?
They would have to go through the circuit court. Because it is an ORS. It's, and we're, even though we're, it's, we're putting it in our ordinances. We're reflecting the ORSs. So if the appeal process, if there ever was an appeal, I don't believe we even issued, there were any violations or anything issued last few years.
Last year had a really good year. I did knock on some doors. I sent out letters. People complied. Just have my scene. One person that constantly does whatever they want, burn whatever they want in their fireplace. They're just continuing to be a problem and they do it because they're trying to make a point that they'll do what they want when they want. So that's pretty much, I had a really good year with everybody last year, even though we knew that moved into town. They were more than understanding.
But, but that's a very good question, Hunter, if we do update our ordinance, you know, saying there, there is a process. And you're saying because of the ORS, the process for appeal would be through the court.
It wouldn't be appropriate, my understanding, to do it any other way. They, you know, someone's upset about it and they feel like they were unjustly served a violation. It's not, it's not a citation. It's a violation. And so it would, it would go, it would still go through them. And because it is reflecting the ORS itself and had a class B violation. And, but yes, it would have to go through the court. They'd have to get a lawyer if they really feel like they were unjustly served it. Or they could go and work it out with the fire chief or whoever issued it and they, that's how the fire marshal handles it.
Yeah, I don't think, personally, I don't think it would be appropriate to work it out with the fire chief. That would be no different than coming to the law enforcement officer that wrote a citation and working it out. We have policies that your only appeal for a citation is through.
Those are citations.
No, this is, those are violations.
Those are violations.
Like a speeding violation, that's not a citation. That's a civil penalty. Running a stop sign, that's a civil penalty. Those are violations. So they can contest it, but they have to go through the circuit court process. Now, they can, if they please, they can hire an attorney or they can just go in person and then appeal it to the, the judge.
There you go.
And then the judge just makes a decision. But you will have to have, if they appeal it, you'll have to have the person that wrote the, the violation appear to testify on, on either the town's or the county's behalf. And why I bring this up, I think it'd just be a good idea to put in that ordinance that there is an appeal process for those who feel that, you know, like, like any other violation, you can take it to court and contest it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. That makes sense to me.
So with the, with the appeal process, have an ORS also numbered that you can put alongside that?
Well, the, the violation is of, I don't know what it's called, inappropriate burning or, or whatever it is. That's ORS, whatever it is. And that's written on, on the actual citation. It's violation of ORS and then it's, it, it spells it out, improper burning during red flag time or whatever.
So we're not discussing this right now, though?
No, this is just to give you guys an update.
If we're discussing it, I got a lot to say.
Well, I, I guess the, the brought forward, whenever we actually, if we put on agenda to amend our ordinance, there'd be further discussion, but I think it's appropriate to have some discussion today.
Just my personal opinion, and I'm buying on all of it except the very first one. And there's no way that I would support the first one where we can barely beat the standards right now. Why do we? Why would you cut that even shorter?
The twenty-five microgram?
Yeah, why, why when we can barely meet the thirty, why would we drop it down to twenty-five? What would be the purpose?
It's just to pre-warn people that we're having poor air quality. Part of the judgment, if we think we're going to be at twenty-five for the daily average, um, or, or higher.
I, I'm fine with giving them a warning, but to actually drop it.
Well, it's, it's not a hard, it's not a hard line, it's more of a judgment call on where do we say, gosh, things are looking bad, we better call it a red day so we don't exceed the standard. And, uh, yeah, some days you, you hit it pretty well. Where you go, gosh, yeah, and, and you'll see us going beyond the twenty-five or maybe the thirty.
I, I just see us restricting our people more and more where they can't burn wood. And I just don't go for it. If I'd have known that one deal was in there where you send the sheriff into somebody's house, I'd have come on route in blue. For a wood stove, that's insanity.
That's a good reason why, why to review the ordinance.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm getting a little wound up.
No, that's.
I mean, we're restricting the people more and more. I, I, I totally understand trying to have cleaner air and to educate people. But to start putting the screws to these people, especially people that can't afford fuel or where they can go out and get a load of wood and burn it, I just, I just don't get that.
There are grants on our.
I, I guess, on the other hand, if, if they don't have a certified stove, that's more of the argument here, the yellow.
Yeah, but we're, we're trying to, with these grants and stuff, we're trying to fix that. And the more money we get for the people to re, to do that, I'm all for. But if we don't have the grants and expect our people to meet these unfunded mandates, it's ridiculous to me. And I just won't do it to our people.
I just reemphasize that twenty-five is a soft target for more forecasting. And I say, gosh, are we, and if it's twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, somewhere still a soft target. It's, it's pretty, a little bit of lack art in figuring that out. Sometimes you'll miss and sometimes you won't. We're just trying to be protective enough so we don't, uh, under predict and then end up with a forty-microgram day and have a higher, higher readings and, and exceed the standard.
I, I, I totally agree with you on that. It's just this other stuff, the.
Well, it's good, it's good to hear. We want to hear feedback, we want to discuss this further and iron out if we can possibly do it. So this is good to hear.
Yeah, we appreciate that. Yeah, we did talk a little bit about that lowering from thirty to twenty-five, whether that would increase more violations or more warnings and, and what that would do looking forward. We're, we're trying to mitigate issues.
And granted, we hadn't had a full discussion with the air quality committee on it yet or anybody, so. It's a new, it's a new concept, so I, I don't know how, uh, uh, Darrell or Robert or others will think of it either. You know, we just pulled that out at the time.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we just want to.
Hope for full discussion, so we'll proceed as we can with working through the issues and I'm sure, uh, we'll while out, are we down before it comes to a final head, uh, in, through hearings and whatnot. I have gone down that process before, so it's a little bit of a black rope for me.
I'm just giving you a warning.
But, but still, because we want to make it as strong as we can moving forward so that it can move forward pretty clear, you know, pretty cleanly. And we're trying to straighten out and clarify things and make it more equitable between the town and county and, uh, you know, and if it's having so healthy air quality for citizens. That is one element we worked on, uh, which is great because we hadn't looked at it in the past few years. It's a, a good time to do that. Uh, let's see, uh, the, one of the, one of the efforts is to keep looking for funding that we possibly can. We did just recently get awarded a seventy-five thousand dollar grant, uh, for essentially wood stove changeups, which is fantastic. Uh, about fifty thousand or sixty thousand, some amount of that will go to changing out, targeting sole source, people have sole source, sole source wood heat or their main heat is wood. The option there isn't necessarily to take, you know, get rid of their wood stove if they'd like to, sure, but it's to get an alternative form of heat available for them that they could use on yellow and red days. That's the main thing. If they have an uncertified stove, we'd like to get, move it out and bring in a nicer wood stove uh, or a different form of heat. So we'll have an opportunity to do, it's a variable number depending on the cost for each one we target, uh, through the program. Uh, we're outlining some of our first steps in doing this, this, uh, this this afternoon through the air quality committee. But about a year and a half to, to work on this and spend money. There's a nice chance we're hoping for a three hundred thousand dollar grant. We weren't successful at that, but we got the second best, which is pretty good. We'll move forward there. Um, maybe it'll be ten or twelve stoves we can change out, which every bit helps. We'll keep plugging away at it. Uh, there is some monies that the town has available through the block grant program. The monies, either repayments from the loan program from the past years. I'm not sure the exact details of that, but we'll be talking about how we could possibly use those either to help with weatherization, for example. But there's a loan program to try to get monies to come back so you can keep helping different people year to year. There, there's money available that hadn't been looked at for a few years, so it's maybe time to look at that. That's one of our, our, our efforts, uh, talked about doing that. Maybe it's just changing out additional wood stoves through a loan program available to rent it, for example, or, or to, uh, rent rental units or maybe a business, they can do that as well. Loans they pay it back over five years, no, no interest loans is usually the way it's been before. Do I take advantage of that if we can, if we can figure it out? Uh, let's see, oh, in, in our, uh, grant program that we, uh, we're just awarded, uh, we're also planning to build some wood storage units for people who could use, uh, a one or two cordwood storage unit to help keep their wood dry. Uh, maybe a combination of one unit and some parts. Uh, a number of people around town could probably use that. Uh, others, you know, we, we, uh, we'll try to do some of those that we can. And a number of other options through that money, a little more outreach. One other element we're looking to do is to do a, a wood stove or wood heating survey of the UGB area to try to figure out and draw a line again. How many uncertified stoves do we have out there? How many wood stoves do we have? How many people maybe they check the box if they'd like to consider changing theirs out? Uh, there's not a lot of money for it, so it depends how complex we want to make this and how we do it's up for, uh, discussion. And we'll be doing that here hopefully next couple of months. During the wood heating season, while it's fresh on people's minds, how much wood they brought in, species of wood, things like that, that always helps. Uh, highlights, uh, here we talked about our ordinances. Oh, uh, one thing that we're looking to do, uh, that's, that's kind of neat this year is join the AlertSense program that the county, I think, is using now and the hospital to set out alerts on according to health messages or county, you know, community messages. We like to do that for red days and yellow days. We'll do the same thing, so you could just reach another broader audience with, and they get a little text, hey, it's the yellow day today, the red day today, not green day. We can still discuss that, uh, when it's lit, but it's another opportunity to help, uh, spread out the cost. The program, air quality program can help pay for some of this, be nice. Uh, join forces in there, who are looking to do that this year as well. Not sure who's going to head, be the champion to head that up, but, uh, we'll tackle it here pretty quickly so we can take advantage of, if that program's available this year. And that's about it on the strategies. Uh, let's see, in, in summary, uh, we did really well last year, or pretty well, I thought, with about twenty-eight micrograms being our, our, our high official reading for the year, that's pretty good. We hope to get a little lower this year if we can. Uh, depends on next couple of months. But we're continuing with our different efforts. We're excited about some opportunities we have available to us now, uh, which is pretty good. So pictures looking a little rosier than last year, you know, with finances and with, with, uh, working on different. That's pretty exciting. Uh, and we're hoping to keep returning i- in the time of the year where we can impact air quality in the winter time and to prescribe fire. We're hoping to still protect the health of, of our, our citizens, our community, uh, when we can. And looking to the town council, the commission, uh, they'll look for your concurrence with, are we doing the right thing here? We, this looks pretty good, can we move it, move it forward? Uh, essentially a, a general consensus to move, move forward with the program. I'm looking forward to today. I'd also ask again, um, it's up to you guys if you want me to come back next year, do the same thing again. I don't mind. Uh, or you just look at, review the report yourself. You can come up with your own questions or comments earlier or both. I certainly don't mind coming before you if that's your, your decision, having a joint meeting, that's fine. Any, any questions, any further questions?
Does the town have anything?
Not, keep bringing up the ordinance that we haven't yet held meetings to actually change, but I do appreciate the work that you guys did and how quickly you left the meeting on last Saturday and came out right on and, and the time that it took because I think we can come to agreement, agreements on, on getting these changes that have been long overdue as, as Mike, uh, uh, pointed out last meeting. But thank you, Peter, for the update, yes.
So, comment, and I read through this, we, we need to accept this program action plan update. But I'm reading through this, following your presentation, and I can't help but think about the time summers to catastrophic fires and health risk that we go through with all that smoke. And I look at this and there was, um, two red days, this is all we have. How big a problem do we really have from the wood stove? As we sit here today and we're, the government's starting to reach out and regulate so much, whenever during the summer, we sit there and smell the smoke all the time. But you, you look through this here and there's nine letters sent out and it is all complied with with the town. And there was five, uh, county letters were sent out, requests for exhibit informed, and they were all complied with. And I'm, I'm wondering, I'm not against all this, we're putting a lot of effort in this, and I, I think we do have some problems according to EPA down through E Q to stay in compliance with these numbers. But for us to answer to our citizens, uh, put these restrictions and everything on wood stoves and there in the summer, it's just fine for the catastrophic fires for all the smoke. And so as we continue to work on this, the people that come to us, that don't want to come to the meeting, they come to us individually, from family members to whoever complaining about, do we really have a problem with the wood stove, wood stove? There's two red days a year and there isn't enough smoke, we can hardly smell it, but we can smell it all summer long. It, it seems like it's very backwards if it is truly a health problem. We have to address these summers of smoke that it's a health problem and it's killing people. How is that acceptable? And then we're enforcing, and I don't think that, that is a huge, huge problem, other than regulations.
Are you asking, or maybe the data to, to, in the summers as well, to kind of capture how much that smoke kind of impacts?
Well, it really goes above, Peter, it goes to Congress, it goes to the EPA. They set these guidelines upon us to have to bill and regulations, but this other is just left up there. So I, I'm just making statements without frustration over the years. And when you start reading, looking at the number of red days, number of yellow days, the number of letters sent out is for all the time spent and money spent, how big is the problem?
I say in two thousand seventeen, uh, Don and Carl, we had about ten red days.
And, and I want to say one other thing I forgot to say is we're in a natural inversion area that mother nature dictates a hell of a lot more wood stove burning here. It may be smoke or something from someplace else that socks in here that we have no control over.
We're trying to, we're trying to get better control on that through the forest. Forestry for one, through the private burners.
I think what Brad would be happy with is if the EPA forced the Forest Service to have healthy forests so we didn't have these fires.
I can go, visiting that for a lot of years.
Try, it is, it's trying to get there, you're not necessarily defending the forest, but, uh, we are seeing an increase in prescribed fire, prescribed burning all over the state. A big increase this year.
So, I, I'm not talking prescribed, but that's addressed in here, I'm talking smoke during the summer.
Well, they're, well, they're trying to help mitigate the wildfire by treating pretty more acres where there's less fuel on the ground. And if a fire starts in an area that's had prescribed burning in the last ten years, fifteen years, it doesn't go as crazy as, as it does in, you know, places that have it. So that's part of their goal. It's going to take ten years to twenty years to help, to really make an impact to get there. We're starting to see, uh, in this district, uh, or in the Lakeview, or the Fremont-Wanema district, I should say, of the streets, national forests and other forests, where they call landscape burning burns, where they're trying to burn a thousand acre to five thousand acres instead of everything in two hundred fifty acre chunks, they'll never get there. You know, that's, they try to save smaller parcels to be closer to town, closer to communities where they may impact with smoke. Further out, they're trying to do broader landscape burns. Uh, they'd do some treatments beforehand to some areas, maybe there's been logging in some. There's been a whole mixture of stuff that they're trying to get to bigger chunks of acreage to help get to that, help slow down wildfires. But it's going to be, the amount of acres that are out for a million acres, you're going to think about doing thirty thousand, forty thousand a year, it's still going to be a long time. But they're, they're trying, but it's, it's, yeah, dollar shit, uh, dollar short delay kind of a thing. But they're, they're trying to do what they can, but yeah, we're in, we're in a big quandary where we're smoked out for summers.
So we, we can give violation a fine up to a thousand dollars to the local citizen, but there is no violation.
For the water.
Yeah, so, so anyway, I, it's just a statement. You know, a lot of this happens because of mother nature all.
Yeah. Oh, my gosh, yeah, like last year with the magic years, we were, just kept being blustery, having air movement. It is wonderful meteorology. This year, we're shaking up, maybe not so much. We tend to have worse stagnations earlier in the year, November, December, but I understand that they can still happen in January, February, and hopefully not this year. But mother nature will dish out what it does. That is, it's, then what can we do for non-certified wood stoves to get people to use other forms of heat? You know, once, once, element in there, there is an Oregon Heat Assistance Program that can help, help people. We may have another form of, form of heat or even just use more electricity, they can get some financial help. We're looking through this grant funding that we just got to help people with financial help as well. On those yellow and red days, it's twenty dollars a day that they've been able to pay for, for the heating. So we're trying to do that too, to help, help for these, for those people who are low, low income. I'm not looking at you.
And heating, heaters.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and we're looking to maybe supply some electric heaters if people are going to plug in. Hopefully it doesn't blow the circuitry.
Well, I'd say have someone enter the home to verify, maybe it won't.
That's, that's, well, that's a challenger, we're talking like that with, with Darrell Anderson, you know, engineer. And you're like, well, how, yeah, well, just keep it under fifteen hundred watts or whatever, you know, just kind of for some older homes. You know, it's, it's a challenge.
Yeah.
Challenger, how do you stop you the challenge here?
Well, I was, I was up in Silver Lake and I was sitting down with a few of the old timers that there's not a whole lot of them left that remember the way it used to be and they were telling me stories about their. And they were telling me stories about their grand, their parents and grandparents. The way the cowboys used to do it is when they run the cattle out of the woods, last man out with the forest on fire. And they, and that's the way it was. And they'd open the woods up and they have better campers' hands. You go up in the Yanceys right now and it's a mess. It's absolutely, that, that place is about ready to light up like, like a box of matchsticks. And there's nothing but dead lodge bowl and just all over the place. And so, I mean, our forests need a lot of work, a lot. And I think that everyone's doing their best to try and bring some different practices in that aren't just prescribed burn. But we're also trying to bring in some better logging techniques.
Fuel, fuel renewable.
And working on those fuels and stuff. It's, it's a really big issue that touches on a lot of things. And I think one of the things that my fellow committee members was alluding to was, I think when the public look at this and they look at us working on something like this, where we're talking about up to a thousand dollar fine for individuals that burn to stay warm during the winter. But we don't do anything when we have the prescribed burns or the other burns that get out of control do anyone else. It gives the public a perception that the DEQ, the government, and those that are, those of us who are in office and trying to serve the public are actually in cahoots with each other. Because we actually do have partnerships and we do try to work together, but they feel like we're not doing that with them. And I think what's great about what you've been doing, Peter, though, is that you actually are. And I think our committee's been trying to find ways to work with the public to try and, try and show them that, no, we are actually on your side. We want to try and give you some options. Not only do we want to try and give you a better stove, but if this is your sole source of heat, you're exempt. And you get the exemption form. And you go through that process.
Burn hot, burn clean, burn small fire.
Yeah, and just try and, try and be smart about it, you know. And so I think that's, that's a really cool thing. And I think what Darwin was alluding to with the, you know, I want to kind of bring back just so that the town knows. One of the things on my mind when we were writing some of these recommendations was, yes, it is a Class B violation where it was a Class A, which was up to a two thousand and up violation, two thousand dollars. We reduced it to the Class B. But there could even be room for recommendation of, say, we recommend nothing over a hundred bucks. We recommend, you know, to, to stay within this scope because we don't think, we don't think that a thousand dollars is fair. And we don't want it to go that high. So that's room for the town to maybe, if you guys want to kind of talk about for your ordinance, and I'm sure we could be talking about those things too as we go forward to have our meetings on this. But also in this right now, what we have before us, it's in section four, I believe it is number eight. The town and county will work together to possibly align the local ordinances and finance for town and enforcement procedures. And that's all it says in this, that we want to work towards possibly making this work so that our ordinances reflect each other. And it shows that we are actually trying to work towards something together. And so I feel like it's, I'm pretty comfortable with this, all in all, because it's not holiness necessarily to any decision that we might make with our ordinances in the future. I think the way you ordered it, Peter, we really did. So thank you for that and all of your forward work you've done on this.
So with that, on the county's part, we need to accept this program action plan update. And there's been a program action plan. This is nothing but an institution with, for Peter, we need to say, we need to entertain a motion to accept the program action plan update.
I'll make a motion to accept the program action update. Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded by the county to accept the program action plan update as presented. Further discussions? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Okay, I also will make, or entertain the motion to accept the PM two-point-five plan update as presented.
I'll second the motion.
I'm motioning. I'm just reading, well, entertaining. So you're motioning. All right, thank you. Volunteer?
Aye.
Great. Motion passes through.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, the town of Lakeview.
Great discussions.
We, we still have more on our agenda. The town or?
Nope. We, at this time, will adjourn our town council meeting at eleven fifty-six.
Okay.